So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the February 4th, 2025, meeting of the Calvert County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Bishop Patton if he would come forward to give us an indication. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd ask you, if you would, to join me as we open this meeting. And I'd also, if I could just take this liberty, it's been a very difficult week for many families. And if we could remember them, if you would join me in prayer right now. Dear wise and loving Father, first want to say thank you on behalf of all of us who are gathered here today. And I thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, and thank you for the ability to be involved in the useful work of this county, and for the honor of bearing these responsibilities. In your word, you've said that citizens ought to honor the governing authorities, because you've established those authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. And because of that, Lord, for the Board of County Commissioners, we pray, and for all of those that are assembled here today, we ask you to grant them wisdom to govern, give them a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, give them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. And I pray, Lord, for the agenda that's set before them today. I ask you to give them assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those of us who live and work in Calvert County. And it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I place a peace in.
To the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this time, we'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
Sir, I move that we remove the award and approve and adopt the amended agenda, moving the consent item to new business.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we approve an amended agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I just want to start off today, as Bishop Patton said, it's been a pretty tough week here in Calvert County. By now, most of you are aware of the impact of this community on the plane crash that occurred last Wednesday in Washington. So at this time, I'd like to just take a moment of silence in memory of those individuals. Thank you. So I know that the news, you know, has talked about the sixty-seven lives that were lost in that incident. I think by now, everyone knows that there were seven young men on that plane from Southern Maryland, four of those from Calvert County. It's been very devastating to thank those seven young men. I think the oldest was forty-four, the youngest was thirty. Had their whole lives ahead of them, and just terrible, terrible tragedy. But, you know, our hearts and our sympathies go out to those families. They're going to need a lot of support in the coming days. Just if there is anyone out there that needs any help, we do have bereavement resources. You can, that's available through aircalvert.org, or the Calvert Crisis Team is also available. You can call 1-877-467-5628. But as I said, those individuals are near future and even, you know, in the long future. Young families, young kids are now fatherless. One young man had only been married sixteen months, was planning to build a house, just had their whole lives in front of them, and just in a second, that all changed. So I just want to, want you all to keep them in your prayers. I'm sure there'll be information coming out. There's funerals and lots of services going on. Just a very tragic incident. And also, last week, we lost Mike King. A lot of you may have known Mike. He was a lifetime county resident, owned the Radio Shack here in Prince Frederick. In the old days, his father owned Boyd King's Service Day. Those of us in the fire department, you got pagers. You had to go there to get your pagers fixed or new pagers. Mike was a great guy, just died suddenly. Great guy, community guy, gave to the community, and unfortunately, lost him. Also, we lost Jim D'Amico from Huntington Fire Department. Jim was a retired DC fireman, was involved in, see if I can remember everything, he was involved Lions Club, Optimus Club, Huntington Firehouse, Boy Scouts, was Election Judge Board, judge for us during elections, drove a school bus. I think I'm missing some things. It's rare these days to find somebody involved in as much stuff as Jim was.
DC firefighter.
Yeah, retired DC firefighter.
And Mike was in Lions as well.
Yeah, Mike was in Lions. Jim lost his parents young, was actually raised by his grandparents, so a great guy.
Great.
Going to miss in this community as well. So last week was pretty tough on Calvert County. So just keep all those individuals in your prayers, please. Takes a minute. Also, last night, we had a deputy injured in an accident. There was a fire just north of Prince Frederick. Deputy was in his car doing traffic control because of the fire equipment on Route Four, and an individual didn't see him and struck that car. The individual driving the car and the deputy both were flown. Deputy has sustained some very serious injuries. He's under surgery today. They're both at Maryland Shock Trauma Unit, so the driver of the other car was Mr. Fred Carter, deputy is Gavin Schuart. Schuart had only been here, what?
Came from Antarctica. He was in here getting sworn on not too long ago.
Yeah.
Pray for his family.
Yeah, in October. It hadn't been that long. So please keep those two individuals in your prayers also. Now, maybe something a little lighter. February's Black History Month, so there are some events going on in the county. You can find out where those events are. But we want to make sure we take this time to recognize those individuals, black individuals that were significant in our history, made this community what it is. That's a month-long celebration in February. There's a planned road closure for tree removal. That tree removal project is scheduled to begin on Monday, February the tenth. They're going to be removing trees along HG Truman Highway, which is Route 765, between Solomon's Landing Way and Newtown Road. So if you're in the Solomon's area, just be aware next week that road's going to be closed for a short section there, just south of McDonald's. And we have an animal from the animal shelter.
That's first class, because there's no carrots there.
Is this a real cat or something?
She is, she is. She's the queen of the shelter. This is Miss Tasha. She is about fifteen years old.
Oh, wow.
She's doing great. She's living the life. She's been with us for about almost a hundred days.
How did she come to us?
So she was, her owner was in an accident and had to be put in the hospital. And so she, I don't know whatever happened with that, but she's been with us since.
And see, folks don't know that either, you know, something happens, some traumatic thing, we're there.
Yeah.
I mean, we're built for this, so don't let anything bad happen to your animals.
No, she, she loves hanging out. She's been staying in one of our employees' offices for a little while, and she just, I'd go in there and I'd turn on the fish tank, and she'd sit there for a little while and just watch the fish, so.
Thinking about dinner.
Yeah. That might have been on her mind, but we like to look at it as she just likes to watch them. But no, she, she does great. She's living the life, and she would just like to find somewhere to live out the rest.
She's talking now.
She's, she's very talkative when she's not being paid attention to. But she is, she's a very good girl, and she loves her wet food. She gets a wet food meal twice a day.
How's her health?
Um, it's not too bad. She has a little bit of some dental disease going on. I think she's a little too old to go under anesthesia for that. But that's why she loves the wet food. She eats dry food, too. It's not to the point where, you know, it's really bad, so. But no, she's, she's doing well. She's got her little beauty mark right here under her eye.
How many cats do you think you have right now?
Right now, I'd say thirty-ish, maybe, and that, that includes our barn cats and, and stuff like that, which we have plenty of, if anybody wants barn cat for your business or barn or whatever warehouse.
They keep snakes away.
They will keep your snakes away.
I know.
And, and the mice and all the things, yep.
They will. They have dead serious.
So it looks like you need a couple barn cats.
Forget them mothballs. Throw a few cats out there and, yeah, they'll take care of that.
So yeah, if you're interested in Tasha, you can come on down to the shelter where they're Tuesday through Saturday, ten to four. You can give us a call at 410-535-7387, or visit our website. All animals that are available are up on the website.
And any animal we feature, the whole adoption fees are waived.
Yep, yep, they are, and good news on that, she was adopted the next day.
Really?
Yes, she was.
No kidding? That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
That's awesome. Yeah, how many dogs do you think you have right now?
Dogs, um, available, I'd probably say about seventeen or so.
Okay.
Fifteen, seventeen.
So everything's real manageable over there right now?
Yeah, yeah, we're doing okay right now. Yep, we have some pigs and roosters, too, if anybody's interested. Yeah, we just did a nice piggy photo shoot, so. They are. They're, they're the small bantam roosters, so they're very fluffy and, yeah.
So they probably don't crow as loud, right?
Oh, they crow.
Do they?
They do. They're just as loud as a big one, so. All right, well, yeah, come on down and see us.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'm not kidding you. I just pop in a lot of times, and it's always spotless. So like, you know, you think like, okay, one of us is coming. No, no, I never say when I'm coming, and it's always spotless. I'd walk right back to the dog. It's always where the dogs, cats, it's always spotless, so clean. You know, when you think of shelters, people think like, mm-mm, mm-mm, I challenge you. Before you go out and spend a lot of money, just go to that shelter and look around, because it is first class all the way.
It's because employees care.
They do. They truly do. Incredible employees down there.
Big difference.
Yep.
Excellent. Well, thank you. And then once again, if you want to adopt an animal, you can call 410-535-7387. So the next item on the agenda is appointments. Miss Emily.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Emily Sharif's Constituent Services Specialist, and we have several appointments on the agenda today for your consideration. The first appointment would be for the Historic District Commission. Staff recommend you appoint Alex Posto to the Historic District Commission, and following this appointment, no vacancies will remain.
Is there a motion?
I move that we appoint Alex Posto to the Historic District Commission.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Second is for the Economic Development Advisory Committee. Staff recommend that you appoint Timothy Garvias and Joshua Gibbons to the Economic Development Advisory Committee, and following this appointment, one vacancy will remain.
I move that we appoint Timothy Garvias and Joshua Gibbons to the Economic Development Advisory Committee.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. A final appointment for your consideration is for the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board. Staff recommend that you appoint Donald Bowen to the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board, and following this, one vacancy for an alternate position will remain.
So before we take any action, we do have three Commissioners that have a conflict, but the Ethics Commission has advised that, that because of their interest in TVDRs, it would disqualify a quorum of the board from being able to participate in matters related to ag preservation. Therefore, they may participate in this decision of appointing members to the Advisory Board for agricultural preservation, for the record.
I move that we appoint Donald Bowen to the Agricultural Preservation Board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item on the agenda is consent. Item one, Department Parks Recreation Prescribed Burn Plan Agreement. Item two, Department Community Resources Fiscal Year 2025 Engaging Neighborhoods. Is there any objection to the items listed under consent today?
None.
I move that we adopt and approve the consent agenda items.
Second. Have a motion and a second that we approve those items under consent today. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Come back to that.
Yeah. We are a little ahead of schedule, so we'll move forward to.
Mr. County Attorney's ready.
The County Attorney for Status of State Legislation.
Thank you, sir. John Norris, County Attorney. Appreciate you having the slideshow up. Let me give you an update. The House drop deadline was yesterday. The, I'm sorry, the Senate drop deadline was yesterday. The House drop deadline is Friday. Their hopper closes Thursday night at five. So we've seen about a thousand bills in Annapolis. The ones that the Commissioners submitted are nine in number. Of those, number three, the tax credit for the former tobacco barns, and also the authority to enter into a pilot for cloud computing have been dropped. So the delegation submitted House Bill 949, addressing the request for authority to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes. The proposal complements existing authority to offer a tax credit for businesses that meet the criteria of the public local law that's been incorporated into your county code of chapter 136. It's been assigned to the Ways and Means and does not yet have a bill hearing date. So that bill is pending. House Bill 998, addressing the request for a tax credit for a former tobacco barn, authorizes you to grant a property tax credit against the tax on the county side that's imposed on certain real property. That's the curtilage surrounding a barn that was used formerly solely as a tobacco barn. So it doesn't apply to anything that has been used or was used for other than tobacco barn in the past. It doesn't apply to new structures. There's no cross-file bill in the Senate, so for these two, we're going to have to get them off the House floor, voted favorably, honored before March seventeenth, so that they meet the crossover deadline and don't get hung up in the Senate side in rules. Then we need them back before signing die into the House with favorable recommendation from the floor of the Senate, honored before April seventh. So the race is on for those two. There are a couple of other notable bills I wanted to make sure you were aware of, and this is all before today's drop of Senate bills. There were a couple hundred Senate bills that dropped today. Present those at a future date. House Bill 270, Senate Bill 116, requires the conduct of an analysis of environmental energy and economic impacts of a data center. This is before the House matters, economic matters, and the Senate education, well, triple E, education, energy, and the environment. This bill had a hearing in the House, and in the House, the sponsor, Delegate Crosby, said that this bill will not stop any data centers from being built or approved in the interim. So the report deadline is 2026 on this, but it's not intended to stop the development of data centers in the state of Maryland in the meantime. House Bill 657, Senate Bill 453, requires Public Service Commission to examine alternatives to the construction of new transmission lines of an alternative, best maintaining historical, environmental, agricultural preservation areas, or that will avoid any overlap with certain lots, parcels, and tracts of land. This is primarily related to the issue in Cecil and Howard Counties, where the state is trying to import more electricity. Currently, I believe we import sixty percent of the electricity for the state of Maryland. And they're trying to account for what happened with the Climate Solutions Now Act that passed, all the incentives that they've created for electric vehicles in the state of Maryland that take electricity off the grid and require charging stations. And it's not just passenger vehicles. If you remember, last year was the heavy and medium-duty trucks, school buses, that are tapped into the grid and require additional service. They also took out the ability for fossil fuels to be used as a heating source or an electricity, an energy source within residential structures. So pushing everything to heat pumps, electric heat pumps, and pushing the heavy and medium-duty trucks and school buses and the cars all to the electric grid has created problems. Part of what they're looking to do is find out how to either create more electricity in the state of Maryland or import more electricity.
It's funny how that works, isn't it?
It is. You, you put something into effect, and then you have.
To figure it out later thing.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, that's so standard all the time, you know, all you're going to do, all this, you don't have the technology for it. My gosh, we have the fire departments in here saying, how do you even put out these lithium batteries? But you want to shove them everywhere. And I just saw on the news the other day, there was a major fire in Northern Virginia, was a car went up with a battery and, you know, and, yeah, it's so far, well, blueprints on hold apparently, or something like that, or looking into that.
Some of the provisions.
But all these man-hours that go into prepare for all because some politicians trying to get votes, that's all it is, you know, is instead of letting the people that do this stuff come up with the ideas, it's whatever it sounds good, and now it's on hold, whatever that means.
So there's a big push now to push from lithium to sodium, which is supposed to be a lot safer.
Is the technology there, though, yet? I saw.
Yeah, no, it's there. They're doing it. But also, I mean, you know, talk about shutting down power plants, you know, they shut down power plants, and now we're trying to find new ways to, to get energy. I mean, you look at that whole Sago as well, so.
Look at Europe. Europe's been doing that for years, and I don't even want to say a number, but I forgot how much of that nuclear is recyclable, but it's like almost all of it. I mean, there's hardly any waste, because they don't have the means to just waste. They're so small, they don't have the resources, yet we've got all this, and yet we just think aliens are going to land and create no footprint and have all this energy, and it's just not reality.
So Commissioner Hart read ahead and skipped over House Bill 398, which is having the electric companies look at where they can get power, but, but the following one, House Bill 505, Senate Bill 434, the studies is asking the Public Service Commission to study things like nuclear energy generation projects.
Funny, huh?
Let's finally do that.
Yeah, huh, funny, yeah. Yeah, supposedly like still one of the cleanest energies, you know, and I believe, and, and maybe somebody knows, I don't know, but I believe, isn't there all the waste? It's, it's nowhere near what people think it is. I mean, it's, it's a very small footprint, even from the old seventies technology, nowhere near what today is.
So, so even if they do that, it takes, I'm told it takes ten years to get a permit to even begin construction on a nuclear facility. So you're still looking thirteen to fourteen years out before you actually get that power.
Federal government's talking about squashing that. Have you seen that?
Just putting it out there.
Federal government's talking about, we don't have ten years.
No, we don't.
Rest of the world doesn't take ten years to do that. Why does the United States take ten years? Hey, it either works or it don't, but all that back and forth, but yeah, that's.
We've had a power plant here for fifty years. We've never had a single issue, so.
I noticed. And look how they, and, and look why, because look how professional they are, look at the money spent into it, look at the professional people they hire. It's not, it's not a mistake.
I switched over to the environment next, because this new area that's called climate vulnerable areas is being identified. They're going to prohibit installation of an onsite sewage disposal system that has more than the nitrogen-reducing technology that's already required in critical areas. So it, and also expands the use of the Bay Restoration Funds, which we were looking to use as part of the funding for the Highlands when they come back in for their special tax district to connect to the public sewer from there and abandon their septic systems. So we're watching that one very closely. House Bill 391, submitted by Delegates Crosby and Longs, would have required the members of County Boards of Education in Calvert, Cecil, Garrett, Montgomery, Queen Anne's, St. Mary's, Somerset, Talbot, and Worcester Counties to be elected by the districts from which they run, so the three seats that are district seats would be elected by their district. The hearing has been canceled on this bill, so we'll continue to watch it. If it's rescheduled, we'll advise on that.
What's your, what's your thoughts on this? Is there an appetite for this?
It's not the first time, it's the first time this has been a loan in the General Assembly. It was packaged previously with election for other county offices. It did not make it far then. I believe that there probably needs to be discussions with those multiple counties on how their Boards of Education are, are feeling, or how they think it should be done.
Looks like they don't have faith in the people to vote in who they want to vote in. They want to maybe manipulate something. That's an interesting one.
Is staggering still on the table, or is that off the table?
The current Board of Education seats are staggered.
Right, but for VOCC.
That was not proposed.
That's the only thing that worried me is just, you know, you just never want a board that is five brand-new folks, and, and you've seen in today's workplace, people don't stay twenty-five, thirty years. and you've seen in today's workplace, people don't stay twenty-five, thirty years. So if you've got a strong staff that's been there twenty, twenty-five years with a lot of history, that can really help. But if you've got new directors in places and then you don't have, I mean, the history means so much because you need to know how to connect A to B and so if anything was going to be proposed, I really, I really liked that part.
The next bill we found was Senator Jackson's bill. He submitted it on behalf of, I presume behalf of the sheriff, but for full-time deputy sheriffs, correctional deputies of the rank of major and below. The sheriff's office would have, they would have the right to organize and negotiate with the sheriff's office. And as it's drafted, the Board of County Commissioners are requesting that we support this with an amendment that would follow more closely the structure with the unions that negotiate with the Board of Education. And then the Board of Education gets its funding from the Board of County Commissioners.
So we spoke with the sheriff this morning. It's not his bill. It's the F O P bill.
Okay. So the F O P request.
I do like that amendment. This takes, this takes negotiations to a whole nother level and I would like to see us not involved in that.
And the sheriff is the employee employer of the sworn law enforcement and of the correctional deputies by state law. They are not county employees. So it would give them an opportunity to negotiate if the sheriff supports the bill and I don't know that he does. I have not asked that question.
Is that a motion?
Do you need a motion for that?
I would like, if there, yes, if, if the board would like to submit an amendment for this bill, we would like a motion.
Uh, one question. So with, with the amendments that you're saying, does, does F O P still support the amendments and does the sheriff?
I don't know. They didn't talk to us before, so.
This has been filed without our knowledge.
So so the amendment, the amendments that, that you're talking about.
Probably would have to recuse yourself.
Okay, okay, then that, then that, alright.
Yes.
So at this point?
Yes, sir.
Got it.
But to answer the indirect question, we, I obviously didn't know who had supported the bill or sponsored the bill. To Senator Jackson. Certainly haven't had any discussions with them regarding the amendments, but since you're not the employer, it would be an anomaly for you to be involved in the negotiations of an employment agreement.
Commissioner Grassley, you want to repeat your motion?
Yes, um, I would like to remove the right to organize and negotiate with the County Commissioners of Calvert County.
That incorporates the two bullet points on that, correct?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the amendment for the bill. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
And I apologize to the sheriff. I presumed without checking that the sheriff had sponsored or requested this legislation, so I apologize for the first.
We all assumed the same thing because we, since we didn't know of its origin.
There is a link, if anybody wants to follow the bills, to the Maryland General Assembly's website. There are a couple that didn't make this list you may also be aware of, the constitutional amendments. So the county commissioner form of government and the Code Home Rule would no longer be permitted in the state. They'd like everybody to become a charter form of government. Our fiscal note on that for Calvert County alone was, was over a million dollars.
Is that the same guy from Carroll County?
Delegate B O U C H A T.
If he wants to dissolve this form and go to.
So everybody has a.
County Executive and a council, and a county council.
Carroll County doesn't even have a county executive.
But that's what cracks me up is, you know, one jurisdiction to speak for all twenty-four.
Well, he's introduced the bill, I don't.
Yeah.
We have motor vehicle bills, secondary enforcement and admissibility of evidence. Senate Bill two ninety-two, law enforcement would no longer be able to do routine traffic stops for minor offenses like unregistered and uninsured vehicles.
Yeah, we're not supporting that.
We're definitely going to.
Yeah, why in the world would anybody want to submit the, you know, how many, how much stuff you pull off the road because it's a stolen car when you see dead tags or a busted windshield? Why would you handcuff law enforcement like that? That is stupid.
Who is?
Charles County.
Yeah, that is stupid.
Mako's opposing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then there was some.
That, that, that's a quote. That's stupid.
Award of Attorney's fees provisioned for violation of the state constitution. So that if a party brings a suit against a local jurisdiction alleging violation of constitutional right and they are considered a prevailing party, they win the case. Though not necessarily do they have to win every point, they have to win one of their points. They could get attorney's fees and that would not be subject to the Local Government Torque Claims Act cap, which exists today. So taxpayers would be bear the burden of those additional attorney's fees and attorneys could be notoriously expensive, worth every gunny, but notoriously expensive.
It's a matter of opinion of what a penny's worth.
Unless there are any questions for me or you have any final comments.
So soon, soon as we have committee hearings scheduled, we'll put out a notice in case somebody wants to track.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's ten thirty-two, which means we can hold our public hearing. Department of Public Works Solid Waste Tractor Trailer Budget Amendment.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Come on in.
Morning.
Morning. Before you start, I was there yesterday. Staff was excellent.
Thank you. There is one public hearing scheduled for today. This hearing was duly advertised and the certificate of publication is made part, part of the record of this hearing. Citizens were invited to provide comment or, or comments on this hearing after the presentation. This hearing will have a comment period following my brief presentation. Anyone here in person must sign in on this, this next to their attorney to speak. I'll read the memo. Background. The Department of Public Works Solid Waste Division transferred funds, transfers funds annually to an equipment reserve account to replace capital outlays as they depreciate. The Solid Waste Division is requesting a budget amendment to move funds from this reserve account to its operating budget to purchase a Kenworth Daycap tractor and open top life floor forty-eight foot Mack trailer to a total price of two hundred sixty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars. Discussion. Due to the various shifts in the recycling markets, the Solid Waste Division has decided to adopt a new recycling program allowing to get revenue from selling recyclables to the markets versus paying a vendor to process our recyclables at the closest material recovery facility. It is essential that we add a Kenworth Daycap tractor and open top life floor forty-eight foot Mack trailer to the solid waste fleet to help elevate strengths in the current program. Purchasing this equipment will allow increasing efficiency in time and fuel for hauling additional recyclables from Calvert County to various markets. Fiscal impact. The fiscal year twenty twenty-five Solid Waste Fund Equipment Reserve Account four zero zero one six currently has five hundred seventeen thousand two hundred and seven dollars. The budget amendment B A twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 two three eight has been created to move two hundred sixty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars from the account four zero zero one six. Other financial sources, use of prior year of fund balance to the account five zero zero two three. Capital expenditures, vehicles, heavy-duty trucks. After the transfer, this would leave two hundred fifty-five thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars for future purchases. Conclusion. The Department of Public Works Solid Waste Division requests the Board of County Commissioners conduct a public hearing and if deemed appropriate, based on the record, approve and adopt the proposed resolution and budget amendment B A twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 two three eight, which moves two hundred sixty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars from the account four zero zero one six. Other financing sources to the account five zero zero two three. Capital expenditures to cover the purchase of a Kenworth Daycap tractor and open top life floor of low Mack trailer. So we did receive one public comment that was made a part of the record for this hearing. And we did the research and we did some math, so we do have justification for this amendment, budget amendment we were requesting.
Well, I met with our director yesterday and we went over this. And I know the money is from enterprise fund, which is what you all get. And quite frankly, I said to our director, if this is from Maria and solid waste, I know it's needed. I know she's done her research and I know it's going to be, if not cough savings, it's going to help make your all's job more efficient.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And you've already bid it out, so you know this is the actual cost.
Yeah, we're actually using source well contracts that, and it will allow some savings in cost and it also will help us to bring additional revenue to the county and also kind of break through the situation where we had no competition for our material because of our isolated situation. We are far from any material recovery facilities. And this way we'll have more options to sell our materials and it will benefit not only commingled containers that we collect, but we also can use it for our materials to bring them to the market.
So my question is, we won't have to hire any new employees for this? This would just be an in-house position?
That's correct. We already have staff that are able to drive the truck.
And just for the listeners, what kind of materials do we haul to other places just to give them some insight on?
Yeah, we have dual stream recycling here in the counties. So we will mostly haul commingled containers, which is like plastic, metal, glass altogether. Or can also use it to haul paper and going forward, we can use it also for tires because recycling tires, it's in, in Maryland, it's a problem, so we can use it for any material.
Very good.
So currently we have four trucks making about eight trips a day and they can haul near as much as the trailer can. How many of those trucks will that trailer haul?
It will be four trucks equal to one trailer.
So really you're eliminating vehicle miles traveled per day probably by about eighty percent.
Yeah.
Pretty close to that.
Well, to that, and also, yeah, it's time, of course, that if we will keep doing what we were doing using these trucks, it will require overtime, so this way we'll save time and money on fuel.
So savings in the long run, this is going to pay for itself fairly quickly, the way it sounds?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I've none.
Motion?
Okay, I move that we close the record and approve and adopt the resolution and budget amendment B A two zero two five dash zero 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 two three eight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we close the record, approve and adopt the resolution and budget amendment B A twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 two three eight. Any discussion on that motion?
None.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So we have one added new business item. We can take care of that at this time. Director Moreland? The Hub eighty-seven budget amendment, isn't there a budget amendment for the Hub at eighty-seven Main Street? I thought we shook it out. Oh, it's in the executive session? I'm sorry.
Consent, okay, and it's been removed.
Yeah, it's in consent.
If you had questions.
Okay, okay.
So when the motion was made this morning, consent, it was removed, I thought.
No, that was the award that was removed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. It was the award. I can see that. It wasn't a grand award. It was the other award. I can see it. I see that.
Got you. I thought you were removing that award. So we have to reopen consent. We do have a third item that we, I missed this morning. Item three, Department of Community Resources, Hub eighty-seven Main Street Budget Amendment. Is there any objection to that item under consent today?
None.
I have none.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Thank you. Sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, Jennifer. Yeah, I thought he removed it too, so. Uh, that brings us to a work session for capital improvement projects. Department of County Administrator, Department of Public Works, whoever. Danielle J R.
There's a four cat in the audience.
There is. I see all these faces out there. I figured that's why they're here.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Danielle Russell, Acting Capital and Grants Management Specialist. From the Office of County Administrator, to my right, Mary Andes, Acting Deputy Director of Budget. And to her right, Director Cosgrove from the Department of Public Works. We also have other Public Works staff in the audience so that when we get to questions, the people that know more than I do have the ability to speak. Um, I will forego reading the memo. Again, it's all covered in the presentation. We'll jump right in. This presentation is the second in a series of work sessions to inform the B O C C of the six-year capital improvement plan costs as part of the staff recommended budget and seek the B O C C's input and direction on those projects. Today's focus will be on the Department of Public Works requests as well as the Calvert Marine Museum under the Public Facilities Division. As a reminder from last week's overview presentation, this chart is a high-level look at the total value of the staff recommended F Y twenty twenty-six six-year capital improvement plan with the F Y twenty-six request on the right. On the left are the totals as approved in the F Y twenty twenty-five capital budget. The percent change is shown in the center column. We'll first take a look at the Enterprise Fund, which comprises sewer and wastewater, water and solid waste and recycling. For their F Y twenty-six request, staff has a six percent reduction from the anticipated funding request in F Y twenty twenty-five's capital improvement plan. As mentioned, the key updates to the C I P include aligning projects with established standards, closing projects and returning unspent allocations to the general fund and refining, refining project scopes to be more transparent. The Enterprise Fund closed two open projects. County, countywide pump station infrastructure had a refined scope. This project combines individual pump station infrastructure projects like Solomon's and Prince Frederick to allow more flexibility in addressing urgent operational needs, code compliance and safety measures. Solid waste center improvements, these were split out into specific convenience center projects like appeal for planned upgrades to those facilities. And the project for grinder pump replacements was moved to sewer and wastewater's operating budget because the annual cost did not meet the threshold for capital projects. So when we approve the capital budget, we are only approving F Y twenty twenty-six. We're going to look at the projects that are actually in your F Y twenty twenty-six request. For wastewater treatment and sewer system improvements, Solomon's E N R upgrade, they are organized most expensive to least expensive on the slide. This is upgrading to meet future regulations, replace failing components and qualify for future funding. Sewer collection system rehabilitation is a countywide sewer system rehabilitation under one contract. Solomon's W W T P septic receiving upgrade is replacing outdated septic receiving stations with a modern facility to improve capacity and efficiency. Water and sewer maintenance building is a new twenty thousand square foot warehouse and office for maintenance department relocation. Countywide pump station infrastructure, general repairs and upgrades for wastewater pump stations to address operational needs and safety compliance. Tobacco Ridge W W T P improvements, replacing and repairing aging equipment, including digesters, lab building and control panels. And Marley Run W W T P improvements, upgrading outdated control systems, including P L C interface hardware and D O probes. Would you guys like to take a break in between each of these little sections or wait till the end of the slide?
I'd like to point out while you're on that slide, you know, people really don't realize, myself included, you know, you have something, but what it really costs to maintain it and keep it running at the level of stuff you just take for granted. You know, I mean, I remember the, the long discussions used to go on paving budgets and when we threw out slurry because it was just such a waste, how much it. out slurry because it was just such a waste, how much it truly costs just for basic infrastructure, I mean, because these aren't the things that people go, oh, cool, you know, we, we replaced some septic piece now, it's, you know, I mean, but it's so vital that if you don't have these things, how quick you realize how important they are and this, this slide shows how expensive it really is. So I just kinda wanted to, to kind of.
I always, I always say for our reaction, there's a reaction and it's really nice when we build things, like we're building the C A B building. But we gotta keep it up.
Yeah.
We gotta keep the infrastructure intact in this county, we have to keep our playgrounds going, the grounds going, it costs a lot of money to maintain this county.
Are there any questions on sewer, wastewater?
I have none.
Okay.
Okay, for water systems, we have, what does C H say?
So this project is Chesapeake Heights stairs beach water distribution system?
As phased replacement of aging water distribution lines, valves, hydrants to improve reliability and water quality. Back Creek Water Loop, installing water line loop to improve service reliability and fire flow capacity. Small water main urgent replacements, addressing urgent water line replacements in priority areas. Cavalier Country Water Distribution Replacement would be upgrading a forty-year-old water distribution infrastructure and valves. Water Station Improvement, general repairs and upgrades to countywide water stations, including instrumentation and facility rehab. And Shores of Calvert Distribution Replacement, replacing fifty-year-old water distribution system and evaluating additional system improvements. And for these projects, there is, they are looking at M D E funding to see how much can cover, as they're multi-phases, they're, they're looking at how much we could help, have the state help us out.
Good luck.
J R, Cavalier Country and Shores of Calvert, how are they holding up?
I mean, considering they're forty and fifty years old, they're holding up pretty good, I mean, we've, we've been through this past year and cleaned their wells, because there's been issues with the wells, we've cleaned their tanks this year, so they're holding up pretty good, considering, but we, it's just like most old systems, you know, there's failing parts, you know, valves go bad, saddles that are on the pipe to, to allow the houses to tap, tap in, they're failing. But overall, the system's holding up pretty good, but it is aging and we do need to replace it because it's the older pipes, like, you know, a lot of them are galvanized pipes, you know? So they, they do need, but some of them are smaller than they should be, some of the old systems, similar, not necessarily in Shores and Cavalier, but some have two-inch lines, well, two-inch lines don't meet fire flow needs, you need at least a mineral of six inch for these, so we need to upgrade them, but nothing else for public safety reasons.
Okay, thank you.
For solid waste and recycling, Barstow Convenience Center relocation and redesign, including stormwater management and improved waste handling equipment. Ball Road Convenience Center, expansion to reduce congestion, add new compactors and improve traffic flow. Appeal Landfill Paving, repaving service areas to improve access and operations. Stationary compactor replacements at Appeal and Mount Hope Centers, replacing outdated compactors to improve reliability and reduce downtime. Lesby Convenience Center relocation, moving operations to Appeal Convenience Center with site restoration. Plum Point Convenience Center Drainage System, addressing drainage issues to prevent waste accumulation and odor.
So Barstow and Ball Road, that's just design money, right?
So the Barstow Convenience Center, we currently awarded the P O to a, to an engineer to start the design work. This money will be construction also because we have prior year funding and this is additional to add to the construction money.
You're still moving up to Williams Road?
Uh, that's the plan, yes.
That's why I didn't think it was enough money due to project was only a million dollars.
No, we have, I think, prior year fundings of three million, I think, I think, so, and I think we have money out on twenty seventh to finish up the construction.
Got you. Ball Road is just design money.
Yeah, it's just design and modifications, that probably some, cover some construction also.
So I'm gonna go back to Commissioner Grasso's question, these older communities that have water in them, is there a replacement schedule for them?
Not really, not as in probably what you're thinking, because these systems hold up fairly well over time.
And I'm sure some are better than others, but I just didn't know if there was something.
I mean, we, we try to keep them maintained, but most of their newer systems with the PVC pipes and so forth. James could probably give you a little more answer.
James, Deputy Director, uh, there are replacement schedules typically based on the type of material that the system was constructed of, so again, the pipe material have expected lifespan, what we'll do is look at that lifespan compared to failure rate that we have, and we'll use that to target when we look at system replaceables.
So are our plans moving forward for replacements is my, is my biggest question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have any questions on the out years, so this would be F Y twenty seven through F Y thirty one?
I don't worry about out years.
Sounds good. Moving on, we're going to start with, or move on to public facilities, for their F Y two six request, staff has a two hundred ninety-three percent increase from the anticipated funding request in F Y two zero two five's capital improvement plan. Some of this is requesting funding for projects that were in out years, so they were moved up to F Y two six, so just keep that in mind, they can go back to where they were originally and staff has their reasons for, for moving them to F Y two six, so if you have any questions, make sure that you ask them.
So if you go through these, when you come to those, you should point out, point them out and why they're being moved up.
Okay. Public facilities closed forty-four open projects. Seven maintenance and repair projects were moved to the public facilities operating budget because they did not meet the threshold for capital projects and we did not change the scope for projects. For F Y two six, first up is the Cavalier Museum Boat Shed Replacement, this is a new project from last year and it involves a replacement of seven poles at the boat shed. Armory Site Development, demolition and construction of the Open Air Pavilion was requested in last year's budget, so this is further phasing in that project, this is also new funding request. A D A Transition Plan, consulting and renovations to ensure county facilities comply with twenty ten A D A guidelines. County Courthouse renovations and upgrades, multi-phase renovation after office relocations, including security enhancements, courtroom redesign, HVAC upgrades and roof replacement. The eighty-seven Main Street Resource Hub, development of a public transportation transfer station with passenger and driver amenities, there are N T A M dot funding requests in the works for next fiscal year. Solomon's Boardwalk and Causeway Investigation Redesign for replacing a deteriorating fifty-year-old bulkhead and causeway structure. Election Board Expansion, office space expansion to accommodate growth. One ten Main Street Public Safety Facility, development of new facility for nine-one-one operations, emergency management and public safety. And Skipjack Road, Building B, office buildout and construction of two sheds. King's Landing Park, there's HVAC upgrades across multiple buildings and roof placement at the Equestrian Facilities. Cavalier Marine Museum's HVAC replacement is replacement of an outdated HVAC system with modern units. Chesapeake Beach Railway Museum HVAC replacement, upgrading multiple heat pump systems for improved efficiency.
I was looking at you.
I'm looking at you because.
I was looking at you, I was waiting.
Replacements for fifty thousand dollars.
So there is some prior year funding, there's fund balances available.
Must be millions, must be millions.
Uh, if, if you remember at the beginning of the fiscal year, we did come in to request HVAC replacements for the Marine Museum and other areas of their, their systems, so that Tom Jones and his team, they're, they're.
Should you go out to a consultant and get like a three hundred thousand dollar assessment?
Experts on that. Tom?
HVAC there, come on up, Tom. You knew this was gonna come up when you had a fifty thousand dollar HVAC replacement.
Morning Commissioners, Tom Jones, Deputy Director for D P W of General Services. As Danielle had noted, yes, these are, we have some prior year funding, this unit is actually one of the smaller units that's at the Cavalier Museum, so the fifty thousand will include iron replacements, resets, and some of this money, or a good portion of it actually goes towards the, um, the actual operation of it to where it's an electronic part to where you can't, it's, it's basically sole, sole source, so when you go and rewire, so we get from a phase one to a phase two, you gotta rewire everything, it goes back to the, the main brain of it, so that's, that's usually somewhere between twenty to thirty thousand dollars to do that by itself, so.
Do you know what the total cost of those two projects is offhand?
Um, I wouldn't say there's, they had been running like sixty to seventy thousand to replace the whole thing.
The Board of Education can't replace a window unit for less than a hundred thousand dollars.
I don't have their money.
So, so let me ask you, so when you had the design, this is, this is a brand-new replacement, right?
It's, yes, sir.
So did you have to go out and get like engineering plans and somebody to study it?
No, sir.
So I'm really confused.
We, we.
How many square feet you think that Marine Museum is?
I'm sorry, say it again.
How many square feet you think that Marine Museum is, if you had to ballpark it?
Thirty thousand, thirty thousand, what I mean?
Thirty thousand square feet and no, no architectural plans or, you mean, something silly like you actually just had somebody come out and just bid the system?
Yes, sir.
And then that, all that money was applied towards the HVAC?
Our actual in-house contractor that we.
I'm confused because for ten years I was told you can't do it that way, see, I was told that you have to have somebody come out and study it, okay? And spend thousands and thousands of dollars to study, millions, to study it, and then to tell you, well, this is what we think you should do, and go ahead and do, and then spend millions of dollars to replace it, and then fifteen years later do it again. So I'm completely confused.
Study always says the same thing, replace it all.
Yeah, yeah, I'm completely confused, I, I've asked questions many times, can you use the same duck work, oh, no, 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 so I'm, I'm dumbfounded right now, I think I've just wasted ten years of my life because I asked that question and was told time and time again, every year around this time, that there's no way to do this without just spending all this money to study it, and now you're telling me you did thirty thousand square feet without studying it, I'm.
It could, it could be for the actual type of unit that they're replacing because some of them.
Has to be, I mean, has to be something that's just completely new for you that, you know, I'm confused because I, I'm just, I'm not that intelligent, I'm used to you go up there and you, you hit this for heat or this for A C and make a real fancy job has like for emergency heat or something like, so I'm confused.
Nothing special.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm blown away, I guess.
Commissioner Cox has a question.
So I'm gonna shift gears, J R.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Tom. It's your fault. Yeah, no, hey, Tom, Tom, Commissioner Grasso has something for you.
Tom, if you, if you can do this, you are gonna be our go-to guy and we are not gonna listen to anybody else, if you can do both of these for fifty thousand apiece.
I'll bring you, I'll, I'll get you the.
Count, count on you.
We're gonna put you in charge of HVAC for B O E.
Okay, I get their staff too?
You're gonna get a new job.
No, it's other related duties, it's, it's the same, okay, I'll take them.
I mean, you know, I'm goofing on you there, but, but I'm kid you not, I've asked that question for years and I'm told it has to be studied and all this kind of stuff, and I'm like, well, I, I, I'm just some dumb guy at my business or at my house, if something breaks, I called a guy out, he looks at it and says, hey, you gotta replace the whole thing, and he does, I've never paid thousands of dollars for plans, but you say the thirty thousand square foot building, you do it the same way I do it at my house.
Well, truth be told, so this whole museum, there's actually ten units that occupy the whole place because there's different sections that they, that they do, so, I mean, in smaller units, I mean, that might have something to do with it, like I say, it goes back to the type of unit, whether it's, you know, what they're using for, whatever, but, you know, we try to keep it simple.
How many, how many elementary schools are bigger than thirty thousand square feet? All of them, I mean, what do you think they are?
I'm saying quite a few, I don't assume that they all are.
Got you, got you, just, just asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, J R, going back to A D A Transition Plan, got a million dollars there. Once we do this million dollars, what is that achieving our A D A goals throughout the county?
Question more for Tom or Jennifer, because they're in charge of the transition plan?
Uh, just how close that's gonna get us with our goals?
Uh, through the A D A Transition Program, we recently just went through a study for all the county buildings, facilities and so forth, says what we're doing, that funding will be part of the actual program that we put together, once that mechanism is funded, we'll go back and start looking at the buildings and so forth and set a, base a set of plan on what we're gonna start doing as far as implementing that will actually bring us in compliance.
Okay, can, can you elaborate for folks at home, what, what an A D A Transition Plan is?
The A D A Transition is American Disability Act, where we went through, we checked every, like a door, to make sure it's wide enough, making sure the light switches are in the right location, waters, you know, access for individuals to enter and leave buildings and so forth, so if anyone with disabilities comes into the building, at that point they have the same chance and opportunities of others that don't have disabilities to be able to operate manual, you know, maneuver throughout.
Isn't that federal law?
Yes, sir.
It is, maybe I'm goofy here, but isn't federal law say that any place that's open to the public and has bathrooms must have an A D A compliant bath plan or at least a plan in place, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I thought I heard that somewhere, um, would, would you say that, um, all, everything in the, that, under our umbrella?
Yes, sir.
We're addressing?
Yes, sir.
Should I just leave that on the shelf, President Hanson, just save that for another day?
You'll have another opportunity in future to bring that up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So one last question for you, J R, so we did this money highest to lowest, one thing would be nice for myself would be prioritize this list and what your goals are to compare to this list.
Okay, we certainly do that for next, we can do that for next, right?
Yeah, no, absolutely, and that just gives us.
An idea.
What your highest priority is.
Okay.
To the least, that's all, thank you.
J R, could you, again, I, I know Danielle said, and I didn't hear her quite correctly, the election board expansion, could you talk about that, what does that entail?
Yeah, so it's kind of, it's one of them, I don't know if you'd say fallout plans, but it's one of them that's after we move into the cab, we have to basically renovate and repurpose space that we have, so that's giving the election board additional space in their current facility down here off of Duke Street now.
Okay.
So where our water and sewer building department currently is, we're gonna modify that space to allow them additional storage and move some of their stuff up there, so they're not all in the basement of the, of the building.
It's like the county courthouse renovations and upgrades, okay, thank you.
And there's additional funding in the out years for the courthouse, that's just the start, we received some funding in twenty-five, we got a consultant on board that I think walked courthouse last week to come up with existing condition plans, so we can sit down with the judge and move forward with their plans and what they want to do with them, the spaces as we move out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We've pretty much been on borrowed time with the election board because they've been crammed for quite some time.
Correct.
So rather than find another location, we're gonna redo the location they're currently in to save money, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so they'll take over that whole building.
Right.
That's great.
Community resources.
Okay, that's good.
They've needed it for years.
They have needed it.
All right, good?
Cavalier Marine Museum.
Cavalier Marine Museum, so some of these projects are ones that did move forward to F Y two zero two six. Cavalier Museum Land Acquisition, securing critical property for future museum expansion as outlined in the Marine Museum's master plan, they are looking at program open space funding for that. Community, Cavalier Museum's Storage Building, construction of permanent storage facility for maritime history collections displaced due to county sewage project, they were in the armory sheds and they moved, so they're looking for a permanent location. Cavalier Marine Museum's Paleontology Center, new facility to house fossil exhibits, research areas, library and office space for growing paleontology efforts, the Marine Museum has secured five hundred thousand dollars in L B I for existing L B I requests. And then security upgrades, implementation of modern security systems, including surveillance cameras and access controls, aligning with countywide security initiatives. Cove Point Lighthouse renovation, restoration of key structures in the lighthouse campus in, including structural repairs, roof replacements and transformation of a building into a new visitor center. Maritime Hall Exhibit Fabrication, redesign of the Maritime Gallery with updated exhibits and rotating displays to enhance interpretation of local heritage. And Otter Exhibit renovation, rebuilding the aging otter exhibit with improved viewing, water filtration, animal care spaces and interactive features.
To reiterate Commissioner Cox's request, it definitely would be great if we prioritize the need.
I know specifically with the Cove Point Lighthouse, Rochelle is here from the Marine Museum to talk more about it, but they are approaching a very big anniversary in the upcoming fiscal year, and I know that some, moving that up to F Y two six is related to that.
Okay.
So if you could just prioritize the list for Rochelle at some point, not today, but at some point. And my vice director and to Rochelle is, don't do like, when I first got elected, Sheriff told me when I asked him to prioritize his list, he said everything on there is my top priority.
Understood.
Either some are pinned and some are penciled, we're all on, so.
Keep it all, thanks.
Do you have any questions on the six-year plan, anything on the out years? Nope. Okay. The final section for review today is D P W's transportation, for clarity, there is some misunderstanding, D P W's transportation refers to transportation infrastructure throughout the county, not the county's transit system, so that is a separate program. For their F Y two six request, staff has a fifty-six percent increase from the anticipated funding request in F Y two zero two five's capital improvement plan. Transportation closed sixty-five open projects for refined scope, we combined transportation safety projects and roadway safety improvements to this project as they were seeking to accomplish very similar goals, so they are now one project. So they are now one project and none of their projects moved to operate it. For F Y twenty-six, we have countywide paving, road resurfacing and improvements, including storm drainage repairs, guardrails and striping. Barstow salt barn laydown yard, replacement of the existing salt storage facility with upgrades for brine operations and truck storage. Sidewalk program, enhancing sidewalk connectivity, retrofitting and repairs to meet ADA standards. Storm drainage projects and road drainage, countywide stormwater management, drainage repairs and pipe replacements. Transportation safety projects, countywide upgrades, including turning lanes, median construction, intersection improvements and guardrails. M S four compliance, ongoing design and construction of stormwater facilities to meet environmental regulations. Um, there are a couple of specific road names, Stephen Reed Road, Walton Road and Orange Drive. Culverts, upgrades for aging pipes to concrete box culverts for improved drainage. Bridge and dam repairs, ongoing maintenance based on biannual bridge inspections. Mill branch road culvert, replacement of deteriorating twin culverts. Breezy roundabout, design and construction of a roundabout and pedestrian pathway for safer access to Breezy Point Park. Stormwater management repairs, routine upkeep and repairs of county-owned stormwater facilities. And then countywide right-of-way acquisitions, the project is to purchase the right-of-ways needed for county roads. Any questions?
So I do have a question for you. So we just went through on public facilities, ADA transition for a million dollars. And then on this one here, we did sidewalk program, ADA for one point six million. What, wouldn't we capture both in one line item or why are we separating them in two line items?
So Paula Works has always had a sidewalk program, C I P, and that's mainly to maintain all the sidewalks throughout the county, um, not just county-owned sidewalks. So.
So that's maintenance and ADA?
Correct. So, you know, a lot of the, the ADA ramps that are on existing sidewalks don't meet the current ADA code. So we'll upgrade those in spots like we, if you travel Prince Frederick Boulevard over the past year and a half, we've upgraded a bunch through there. Um, there's, there's also additional issues, like the sidewalk down in St. Leonard's. We've got a number of complaints along seven sixty-five and Calvert Beach Road. Um, because, you know, the trees have humped up the sidewalks, they've dropped the spots. Well, yes, those are state sidewalks, but there's a legislation in place that requires the local subdivision to maintain those. County to maintain those sidewalks. So we have an estimate of close to seven hundred thousand dollars just to replace and repair all the sidewalks within St. Leonard's. Because we've had complaints from handicapped individuals that walk that area. That they can't. So that's why there's such an increase in the sidewalk program this year compared to the past.
Okay. J R, let me ask you on, on that, are you using any state funding for your repairs?
No, we are not.
They've shifted the funding to us.
So that's to my point. Once you do those repairs, does that get us out of our responsibility back to the state? Because a lot of that stuff like those trees and all bring that up, you could remove those and not have the future repairs and like all that problems we got down Salmons because of state money. Does that alleviate us out of that once we use our own to replace it?
Probably get kind of caught in the trick bag because I think the county requested additional streetscape, as the state called it, within the town center of St. Leonard's, which is why the trees are there. I don't think anybody thought ahead when they did that plan decades ago, what tree to use and where to place it with relationship to the curve in the sidewalk, which is causing our problems. When we go back and modify all this, we're taking a look at which tree best suits the area, but still meets the streetscape requirements of the town center.
Cause you know, I mean, what do we hire? We hired like a full-time landscaper or something for Salmons or, I mean, it's all because we can't concrete it.
Correct.
So is there any relief inside to that or?
No, I mean, the Salmons project you're referring to is a little different because that was required stormwater management.
Right, right.
Putting in. The trees and all within St. Leonard's was more not for stormwater, but for streetscape to beautify the area.
And the storm, it doesn't even work, the stormwater management part doesn't even work. So it's so silly. I mean, it's.
It works to an extent. It needs maintenance yearly to maintain it to its.
Right, because one stuff grows into it and everything else and, yeah, so you're constantly.
It's constantly maintenance on them.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't know if once we started paying the bill full-time, if that alleviated that.
No, it does not.
Yeah, so any future sidewalks, I tell you, just me personally or anything like that, the state contribution's not that big. I don't know that I want it.
So I mean, even the sidewalks that was constructed along Route Four during the improvement project, those are our responsibility to maintain.
That's what I mean. Yeah, it always comes with a price tag.
I mean, they're nice and they're needed in town centers for walkable communities. I get that, but.
It's almost cheaper for us to do it from the start.
Issue is the trees that were planted.
Correct. That's the biggest issue. We usually have issues with the trees more so than anything else.
Because the roots.
Yep.
I'm sure all of this is deemed necessary. The countywide paving for ten million dollars, is that a firm number or a guesstimate from previous projects that we've done?
If I have my deputy director, Matt Tamer, he has the information on the paving.
Okay.
He's my go-to guy for paving.
Good.
Matt Tamer, Deputy Director, Construction Management for D P W. Um, in the past, we've been delegated to, uh, maintain a level of service of twenty years for the life of asphalt. I don't know the exact year that the commissioners adopted that, but that's put up and following since it's been here. Um, with the money that we've been given in the past, we've been able to maintain approximately twenty-four miles of road a year. Um, asphalt only lasts twelve years. It does not last twenty. Um, we use a fifteen percent rap, which is a recycled asphalt product in our asphalt mix. Um, you see the state utilizing more rap in their mix, but they're resurfacing every five to eight years. Um, we cannot afford to decrease the longevity of the product that we put down because of the life expectancy we're expecting out of this product. Um, we're resurfacing roads anywhere from eight years old to forty years old. Um, and trying to maintain that twenty-year level of service. Um, if we were going to go with the life of asphalt based on the price today, we would need about fourteen million dollars to maintain a twelve-year life expectancy. Uh, the number you see that's being requested is trying to float the middle line. Um, fourteen million's a lot of money. I don't think that as a county and the staff that we have, we can put down fourteen million dollars worth of asphalt in a year. Um, to answer your question, it's not a hard number.
But Matt, it also determining factors, the traffic on that road.
That's correct. That's why some roads are getting paved every eight years. Uh, for example, a Dow Rumble Road that gets a lot of salt on it, a lot of shade, a lot of abuse in the winter, you're resurfacing that every eight years.
Cause you resurfaced a, over forty-year-old road down by me this past summer, never was perfectly fine, but because it was over forty years old, you repaved it. But it doesn't have much traffic. You know, it's four or five houses on the road.
That's correct. And to support the roads that we choose to pave, in two thousand nineteen, a firm was hired to do a P C I, which is a paving condition index. Um, we aligned that with the list that we had staff already generate and our lists were in line with what we hired a consultant to do. So we have not hired another consultant since then. The data that we received from them was twenty-twenty data and we received it in twenty-twenty-one. Um, we have a paving condition index on every county-owned road in the county. We have videos of it. We utilize that in some of our analysis and, uh, answering constituent requests for resurfacing our potholes. We're able to go back and utilize that data for some of that information.
So Matt, just to be clear, to, uh, for the fourteen million, is that gonna get me the twenty-four lane miles I need? Or is that gonna go from twenty years to the twelve-year service?
Um, like I said, we're floating the line. We're not, I don't foresee that we'll ever meet the twelve-year life expectancy. Um, you're probably, without putting a calculator to it, you're probably requesting an average of fifteen to sixteen years out of your asphalt at the ten million dollar number.
Okay.
Instead of the twenty. But, um, asphalt's more expensive. We changed our striping program, uh, which is covered in this as well. Uh, we're using thermoplastic striping mirror in the straight, the state where you have the glass beads for reflectivity. You don't get that with your standard latex. Um, you also get eight years of life out of the thermo versus one to two out of the latex.
Okay.
So.
And Matt, you're not using any slurry anymore, right?
I have not put down any slurries since I've been in this.
I thought you were gonna do Cake Leonard Road.
Yeah, I know, right? I know, right? Yeah.
They didn't raise clay for that.
C R six.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Um, J R, I, I'm gonna call you in the next couple of days. Last year, we thought we were gonna be able to get to, um, a development off of Cheneyville Road. I had talked to you about that and, uh, it had to be put off. So I'm, I wanna double check so I can let those people know if they'll be on our schedule this year.
Look forward to the call. I look forward to the call.
I look forward to talking to you.
I look forward to hearing what comes of the call.
And I'm glad I'm not on it.
Smart man.
Any further questions on transportation projects? We are still seeking input from the public. Uh, there is a web form available. The link is part of the presentation. I took the space out this time, so it actually works. Uh, today we covered D P W. We'll be back next week to cover our other in-house agencies. And then February twenty-fifth, we'll be looking at the Board of Education's requests.
And just for the future, uh, we're gonna wanna see prioritized lists.
I, I, I'll reach out.
We're not gonna fund everything, so.
And so when, when we come back on the fourth, um, we'll review the prioritizations, uh, at that point in time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Or at least at the end, once we get the final document.
Yes.
But moving forward, people should know moving forward that they're gonna have to prioritize their list.
Yes, sir. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
So the next item on the agenda is we have a few guests in here today. Mayor Wall and your council members and your new administrator.
I think they're coming.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah.
Yeah.
We think we have what, two?
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
So we wanted to give you an opportunity. We have a new mayor, a new administrator, a new council at the beach. Wanted to give you all an opportunity to come down, introduce yourselves and, uh, have an opportunity to talk.
Great. Let's try to turn the microphone on.
I think it is.
It's, it's, it should be live, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, uh, thank you for the opportunity to come and, and, uh, visit with you. Uh, we have two council members who are supposed to be here, but I think.
There, there, there they are.
Here we go. Here they are.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Everybody, come on up.
We'll get you another seat.
Yes, of course.
Hi.
How you doing?
Morning.
You gotta pretend like you like each other. We do, we really do. Uh, let me introduce everybody. Well, first of all, I'm Bruce Wall, uh, mayor of Chesapeake Beach, uh, for the third term, but not consecutive. Uh, and I've been involved in the town government almost since I moved to the county in nineteen eighty-five. This is, uh, uh, Samelia Akodu, who is our, uh, town administrator. And she kicks me if I get her name wrong, so that's why I understand. Um, I, I met Samelia at, uh, the same, we go to the same church. Uh, she helped on my campaign. I had no idea that she was the incredible administrator that she is. She's doing a fantastic job and, and we're just, just getting started. Anthony Green is a member of the council, uh, very dedicated individual, very giving to the community. Laura Blackbelder, she, uh, uh, is very involved in a lot of different things around the town, including the tennis courts and the fids, uh, area and so forth. Um, and we're still getting our feet on the ground. We just, our very first meeting was in December. Um, and, uh, the previous administration just kind of packed up and left and really didn't provide us with much information as they went out the door. So we're piecing things together and, uh, and I just wanna say we're very grateful to be here with you today. Um, uh, Mr. President, you and I have known each other for a long time. Uh, we've, Captain Grasso, we've, we've talked many times. Mike, it's been a while since I've seen you.
Actually, though, I was in your neck of the woods. I was gonna say, um, you know, I don't go north of St. Leonard's. So, you know, yeah.
Did you get a passport?
I, I do. I do. I need to apply for pass to go north of St. Leonard's. I don't normally, uh, but, um, I was up that way and me and Carolyn, um, we stopped in that restaurant that's in the parking garage, um.
Nineteen thirty-six.
Yeah, and it was cool. It was really cool. The view is great and all and, um, you know, when I was a bread guy, I used to serve that area and stuff. So, you know, and, uh, I don't, you know, like I say, I truly don't go unless Zach's got a game somewhere. I mean, I travel over that, but, and, um, but, um, it was really cool. It came out really nice up there, um.
That's great.
Yeah.
Glad to hear you, I'm glad to hear that you like that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it was really neat. Yeah.
And, and from the, if you're on the west side of the building, you've got a good view of the railway trail. That was something I was very proud of getting done, uh, many decades ago. And I know that many of you, if not all of you, are familiar with that. And, uh, one of the things that we hope to do going forward is to extend it to the town limits or even further. Um, and, uh, we were halted by the Critical Area Commission when we were building and we had everything in place to do that. And that was my project for actually twenty years. Um, Critical Area said you can't go beyond the creek and we're going, why? Well, you can't, you know, Critical Area Commission. So I think there's all new commissioners and everything else, so we may try to revisit that. But we are happy to answer any questions you may have and let me allow my colleagues to speak.
Please.
Uh, Laura, would you please tell everybody what you're interested in because, uh, because she is a ball of fire, I've gotta tell you.
Hi, I'm Laura Blackbelder. Um, I have been involved with Chesapeake Beach for about seven years now. I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, I, um, led a lot of the efforts in the comprehensive plan that have to do with biking, um, trail projects. I'm really excited about placemaking Chesapeake Beach. I think that Chesapeake Beach can be a, a really cool cornerstone for Calvert County and really the whole region. Its history is as a recreation destination. I feel very strongly that it should stay like that. Um, so when I'm asking county commissioners for things, it's, it's to put us in your program open space, to put us, um, in your transportation trail projects. Um, I would really like to get bones in place to make Chesapeake Beach a really special destination. Um, that's gonna help our businesses. That's gonna help the quality of life for our residents and the greater county residents. So that's, that's what I'm interested in and that's what I've been pushing my colleagues towards, um. And I, I, that's what I plan to continue to do, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I, and I'd like to add that I, I wholeheartedly support the efforts that Laura is involved in. And, uh, she has a vision and she, uh, knows how to pursue it. Uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm grateful that she is tackling these topics that she's, uh, listing. And there's some things that have been lingering for years, actually more than a decade, that need to be resolved at, at the town government level. And we, we're gonna work on that and with her focus on these things, it's helping us to understand, uh, what's going on. And I'm grateful for her participation.
I, um, Anthony Green, I've met a couple of you before. I saw work for the Health Department. Um, I've done a lot of good work with you guys, uh, in the past, especially through economic development with the many, uh, different, uh, events that I do throughout the county. Um, so right now with the council, I'm more of a goal-oriented person, very actionable items, what is the problem? What is the solution? How do we get it done? So you won't get a lot of talk out of me. Um, which means I'm gonna cut this very short right now. But, you know, I am definitely here to bring some balance to the council, make sure it's your empathy to our people. Make sure that we're making sure everybody is taken care of across all of the cultures or financial backgrounds and things like that. And that's what's most important to me in this particular, um, in this particular, uh, I guess it would be, what's the word for it?
Term.
Term, yeah. Um, and then also you guys have one of my favorite people working with you, Ashley Staples Reed. Uh, we came up together in prevention services with the behavioral health department. We worked together for a lot of years. Um, so, you know, I'm all, uh, for making sure we all work together and get things done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Samelia, uh, is our town administrator and I will share with you how I met her. Um, we both attend Chesapeake Church in Huntington. Um, Samelia volunteered to serve on my campaign committee. Uh, I knew her because she, uh, gets up on the stage every few weeks and sings like an angel. She has a voice that is unbelievable.
Can we get a sample?
I'll be on stage on Sunday.
Is that above St. Leonard's too?
Well, it is streamed. It is streamed. Okay, so if you go to Chesapeake Church.
Yeah, we don't want the church falling down.
Might catch on fire.
But, uh, she, uh, has stepped in, the previous administration basically just shut the door. The previous administration basically just shut the door behind them and didn't provide us with any uh, assistance whatsoever in assuming our new roles. And so Samelia has done a good job of trying to figure out what's going on and getting us organized and so forth. She's an incredible organizer, as well as being an incredible songstress. But let me let her speak for herself.
Thank you, Bruce. Hi, everyone, I'm Dr. Samelia Akodu. And um, I come to this work, I, I've run a state office, so the State Office of Service and Volunteerism, um, under both Governors Hogan and Moore. And then I went into private consulting, and so I was able to continue working with govern, governments, um, specifically the Governor of New Jersey's um, office as they were working to establish a mental health corps. So I have lots of experience um, at, at state and federal uh, levels, both running offices and administering grant programs. Um, so this is my first foray into municipal government. Um, however, my focus is really around harmony and efficiency. So I want to make things as efficient as possible so that the residents of Chesapeake Beach can focus on living their, the, the fullness of their, their lives and not have to be focused on, you know, bureaucracy or red tape or anything like that. So um, that's really my focus and making sure that I'm supporting the, the council as they're um, moving to establish and um, see their initiatives come to pass. And so that's where my focus is. Um, I have had a great time working with the staff and getting to know the residents. I've lived in Calvert for about, uh, about ten years now and in Chesapeake Beach for two years. So I'm excited about the opportunity, excited about being good partners at the county level. So making, making sure that the things that we're working on together come to pass. And um, also just making sure that I'm advocating for the residents in Chesapeake Beach.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just add a couple more tidbits, if I will, about myself. I don't like to talk about myself that much, but I'm gonna. Um, but I also serve on the Maryland Public Broadcasting Commission, which I'm very proud of. My background, uh, my whole career was in broadcasting. I'm a founding employee of National Public Radio. Um, I served in Vietnam and Armed Forces Radio and Television. I was the detachment commander of the Broadcasting Detachment in Pleiku in the central highlands of South Vietnam. Um, so it's been, that's been my whole life. Uh, I did consulting business for a number of years for ABC Radio Network in New York and Sirius Satellite Radio. I helped get them on the air. So I've, I've done all that stuff. And that's been in parallel to my service to uh, the citizens of Chesapeake Beach. I moved to Chesapeake Beach in nineteen eighty-five and very shortly thereafter, Mayor Gerald Donovan said, I need you. And so I, I, except for the past eight years, have been involved in the government of Chesapeake Beach ever since. And we're really grateful to be here with you. Uh, we want to rebuild the relationship. We want to have a, a great relationship with the Board of County Commissioners. And uh, we'll issue a special passport for you. We, we might even send somebody down to pick you up. It might be.
Hey, there you go, that works. None of my GPS goes that far.
But uh, thank you for the opportunity to be here. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and it's, it's just great to meet with you.
So irregardless of Commissioner Hart, the rest of us come to the beach alive.
I want to go see Ronnie Millsap up there.
I go to traders, I don't, I have been to nineteen thirty-six, but.
I've been to traders a couple of times.
I go to traders, not for the slot machines, I go for the food.
Car shows on Friday nights.
Is that right? Yeah.
I like the um, they have the uh, all the vendors. Like to get up there like once a year and they have all the uh.
On the boardwalk.
Yeah.
That's North Beach.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Get your beaches straight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I might also mention that uh, I, I've met with the mayor of North Beach a number of times, and he's now referring to the beaches as the Twin Beaches again, but he didn't during the previous Chesapeake Beach administration, so.
That's nice to hear.
It, it is nice to hear, isn't it?
That's how I knew as a kid. I kid you not, as a kid, it was Twin Beach. I didn't know.
Right.
The separation when I was a kid, I kid you not.
We always called it the beach. We never separated. It was the beach.
Sheriff's Office always referred to it as Twin Beaches.
Mm-hmm.
And, and uh, and I suspect you've already heard the sad news about Mark Frazier. Mark Frazier passed away last night.
No.
Oh, we did have, no.
He, he, he had a fall about, what, about a week ago.
Oh, that's, oh, that's sad.
And he went undiscovered uh, for a long time, I think forty-eight hours.
Oh, no.
Uh, his brother, Duncan, li, lives in my subdivision, and he reached out to me this morning and said that Mark had passed last night about, I think of a two or three AM. But he had not regained consciousness since he was in hospital.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Especially since he's a former county commissioner and former mayor.
He did a lot, a lot for this county and the beaches.
Sure did.
He really did a lot.
Mm-hmm. He did, we will miss him.
Lot of sad news.
Oh.
Wow.
Always been a bad week.
Well, I, I wanted to congratulate all of you, and I know Mayor Wall, you and I have spoken. I, as soon as you, you get your bearings and the um, town administrator gets her bearings, can you please give me a call? I'd like to have a sit down with you.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
We would love to do that.
Well, town administrator should be easy, because see, Mark tells me, all he has to do every week is just call in every once in a while and all takes care of itself, so that's what he tells me, so I.
You can get some advice.
It must be a piece of cake, you know.
He'll have to tell me his trade secrets, because that does not be my experience yet.
That's why he varies, so that he ever gets above St. Leonard.
He tells me I don't have to. He just. I just want to say thank you and I look forward to the new partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, indeed. Great to see you guys.
What changes you're going to make, because I know there's been some uh, some areas of contention in the past couple of years, and it'll be interesting to see how you guys are going to address that.
Things, things are changing quickly.
I'm sure.
They're changing quickly.
And hopefully we can help with anything, you know.
We'll, we'll take you up on that offer.
You get a lot of action in the summer. I mean, that's, that's a.
You bet.
That, that place sees a lot of folks, so.
One more thing I might mention, you know, the water park was closed uh, last season. Uh, and it will be closed again this season, although I made a, a campaign uh, pledge to get it reopened, but then what, because I, but I have no access to the town employees or the town government. Once I did, I realized that uh, it's just not feasible to get it reopened this year. There's too much work to do, but we are going to restore it. We're not going to replace it. And the plan now, unless we hit another roadblock, is to open it next year. So I want to share that with you.
That's great.
I know it's a nice amenity.
It is a nice amenity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I too want to welcome all of you aboard, especially the new councilmen, because uh, it's uh, it's rewarding and frustrating all at the same time. Uh, but it, I think that there are pros and cons to having a new council. You have a whole new vision. You know, you don't have historical knowledge, sometimes that can weigh you down. But now you all have a much clearer slate to work from and you have Mayor Wall to lead you, and he's got some experience, so uh, and we do share, uh, even though you're up in that northeast corner of the county, we don't forget you. We know, we know you're very valuable to Calvert County. We value the beaches, for sure. And uh, we do have some shared projects, you know, we own the land under the water park. We have communities that are there, uh, and we share the water sewer treatment plant. So as Commissioner Rasso said, uh, once you all get straight, we do need to sit down and have some conversations about.
We can do that, yeah.
Especially the water sewer plant.
I look forward to that.
So uh, but yeah.
You know, um, my, my dad would have been ninety-six, and when he was, he died at ninety-five. And when he was around ninety-three, I said, and oh my God, he used to go to Uncle Billy's and he became a DC police officer. I don't know how he did, because my grandma and granddad had to bail him and my Uncle Art out so much from all the hell they raised down there. But um, I took my dad on a tour and we had lunch at nineteen thirty-six. And my da, my dad's head was on a swivel. He could not believe how beautiful the beaches are now and, and the, the economic opportunity and the, the residents and all of that. Um, for an old man, you made his day. It was like I took him to Disney World.
That's great.
It was fun.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 interestingly too, uh, my other hat was, has always been in broadcasting, and I'm a member of the, a, a life member of the Society of Motion Picture Television Engineers. There's a DC section of SIMT, that's what it's called. And in the past, they used to have an annual meeting called Bits by the Bay at the Rod and Reel. Uh, and of course, the Rod and Reel having, well, first of all, COVID hit and that put the brakes on it. And then the Rod and Reel's been rebuilt, but it's coming back this summer. And so for the first time in many years, we're going to have Bits by the Bay at the Rod and Reel again. And of course, there's twice as many hotel rooms, more than twice as many hotel rooms now. And the, you know, some people don't like the growth, but other people, like me, I see it as a good thing, because now my colleagues in the broadcasting business and in motion picture business, everybody can stay in Chesapeake Beach, because it used to be that half of them would stay in Chesapeake Beach and half of them would have to come here to find a hotel room. So the.
We don't mind that.
It's still Calvert County.
That's right.
So, uh, but anyway, the good news is uh, that for things like that, this, this amenity is going to prove to be a real benefit to the town. I'm looking forward to that.
And we look forward to working together. And you're welcome to stay and join us for lunch.
Thank you, we will do that.
A little bit of business to take care of.
Thank you, we will do that. We'll sit back in the audience.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us here today. I appreciate your support.
Absolutely. So Councilor, I believe that brings us to public comment.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the room for public comment? And there is no one online, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
That brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Cox?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, so please keep in your prayers, um, Dr. Frazier that was just announced, uh, Jim D'Amico, Michael King, Deputy Gavin from last night, and also the flight of fifty-three forty-two. Um, all that was impacted with that uh, tragic uh, accident. And also, we had a lot of first responders from the county that was working the scene that morning, that night and that morning. So I just want to keep them in their prayers also. Um, and I want to end, uh, we did go to the Student Safety Wellness Advisory Committee last week, and they had an open forum for listening and, which was very good committee out there. And I do want to end with a positive note, um, for business. Uh, went to the bowling alley the other day, and it was amazing to see how many young youth was at the bowling center that, that night. It was clean, they did a wonderful job in uh, just highlighting the Calvert County business as doing, doing well, so.
And that's an institution, it's been there forever. When, when, when do you think that place opened up? Hmm, well, the old one used to be there by uh.
And Jenny's, and Jenny's, and Jenny's used to be the duck pens.
Yeah. And remember Solomon's had one. So that one has been there since the seventies?
Early seventies.
Ever since I can remember, it's been there. Yeah. Yeah. And I'm so glad to see it's still there. You know, it's so hard for businesses these days, and that's great.
But it was full of youth.
Yeah, and that'll keep it going.
They were playing country music.
What? What?
Yes.
Wow.
And, and I think uh, new owners acquired that maybe a year or two ago. And from the outside, it looks like they really have done a lot to bring it up and spruce it up.
Yes.
Yes. My, my son goes there with his wife and children.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hart?
I just want to echo everything Commissioner Cox said. Boy, what a tough week. So many people passed and, and being a small town, everybody knows everybody. Everybody has a connection somewhere. It's just, it's truly just beyond sad. Um, we had an officer uh, struck in the car last night.
Last night?
Um, just boy, just this year has started off something else. Um, I'm just, my deepest condolences, I just um, boy, I just, it's just beyond sad. And I'm so, so sorry, I don't know. I, I just pray for comfort for everyone out there and um, so, and that's it.
Commissioner Russell?
Well said, Commissioner Hart. Uh, again, I echo the loss of Mike King, Jim D'Amico and Mark Frazier, pillars of our community. Um, what a tremendous loss. And um, our young men that we lost in Southern Maryland, oh, what a shock. We, we, we have all come together, we are all in a state of shock. And um, just to let you know how far lives impact each other, I have a brother that works for six oh two, and he uh, worked with three of the young men from Charles County. And I have a nephew who's in the trades, and he taught two of the young men that passed. Um, my brother works with a lot of Calvert County men and women. Uh, none that were lost work with him directly, but um, what a loss. How's, how, just, just beyond sad. Um, congratulations to Patuxent Printing. They had an open house, celebrated ten years, Teresa and Dana. And I also attended the BOE audit exit. So uh, that was very untrusted and um, informative, and that's it.
Thank you. So um, I attended the school safety meeting the other night. It wasn't very well attended, that was their first public meeting, but uh, we have a great work group there and they're going to do great things. I look forward to working with them. And Commissioner Ireland had to duck out and go to Indianapolis to testify. Uh, our bills are still working their way through the process. Once we have uh, committee notices, we'll get that word out in case citizens want to uh, testify or send in testimony. Also, Saturday night, I attended the uh, National Wild Turkey Dinner at the Fairgrounds with Commissioner Ireland. Uh, had a good crowd. Want to thank Jay Johnson for all that group is doing to help youth and disabled hunters to be able to participate in the sport. Uh, Jay tells a story of most of you may know, we opened up the Hughes Tree Farm this year for hunting. And because of the road system in that property, it's perfectly adapted for handicapped hunters. And he took a handicap hunter and he called me back in December and he said, uh, took the gentleman, he didn't harvest an animal that day, but he had such a great time. And he said, two days later, his wife called Jay and thanked him again, because said her husband hadn't stopped smiling, just to have the opportunity to get out and enjoy nature. So, uh, Jay's, like I said, he's done great work out here trying to help our youth and, and uh, want to, can't say enough about thanking him for that. Uh, and as, as we've already talked about this morning, it's been really tough here in Calvert County the last ten days. Uh, we just learned about Mark Frazier, who was a great public servant.
Did a lot.
As a dentist, served the community, but worked at all levels of government to help and serve the state of Maryland. So uh, we're going to miss him greatly and uh, uh, again, don't have any details, but uh, just want to ask everybody to keep all these families in your prayers. Uh, it's going to be, it's a tough thing, especially when you lose people suddenly and it's unexpected, so. I, I also want to give a shout out to Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Cox started a little fundraiser to support those seven families and um.
It was a community effort between a lot of organizations, and we have been overwhelmed. But it was a community effort between a lot of organizations and everybody came together.
And it was outstanding, so.
Thank you for doing that.
Because they're going to need a lot of support, not just financially, but.
Everything.
Yeah, so uh, but at least you helped ease some of that burden, so thank you very much for that.
Welcome.
Um, let me see, and then we're, just reminder, everybody, it is Black History Month. You have to keep your eyes open, there will be some events going on in Calvert County to celebrate. Uh, the planned road closure in Solomon's between McDonald's and uh, the shopping center is going to occur on Monday, February the tenth, from seven AM to three PM, so just be aware. Animal shelter of the week, we had a cat in today, and just remember that there's no adoption fees for any animal we feature at our meetings. Um, and I think that's probably about enough.